Begin our monthly meeting, March 11th. And at this time, we'll call the meeting to order. And the first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda and we'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Mumo, Mumao to approve the agenda and Ms. Silver to second it. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. And at this time, as is customary in our board meeting, we will take a moment of silence. And we have a lot to be thankful for and a lot to pray for, so at this time, if you'll take a moment of silence, we appreciate it. Okay, I appreciate everything there. Appreciate everything personally. At this time, the McDowell NJ ROTC will do our colors for us. And Dr. Grit, there is a member here that you need to introduce when they finish to give, she wants to tell about all their recent accomplishments. And it's quite, quite an accomplishment. So we'll turn it over to you, Captain Ross, at this time. Thank you, sir.
Color guys, attention, set, stand, three, color. Ready, cut, forth, one, march. Color guys, halt, right, face. Present. Color.
Please join me in pledge. Pledge your allegiance to the flag, that we are not slaves of the American government. And to the motherland, where we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stand, three. Color. Ready, cut, left, face. The way, march. Color guys, halt, right, face. Halt, the color. Left, face. The way, march.
Okay, before I turn the floor to this non-patch, I'd like to just summarize what they've accomplished this year. They started the marksmanship season in September. December, we started the tournament with about 8,000 teams competing. McDowell's made through a bunch of elimination rounds. Now we're one of 28 teams nationwide left in that out of 8,000 going to Ohio next week.
Wow.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Cadet Perry of 3rd Class Steiner. I would like to say thank you for your support that you have for us. And we will present McDowell High NJ ROTC next week at National Championship in Ohio. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Captain, and we wish you guys the best of luck in your. All right, folks. All right, I think we got everybody in. I'm going to go ahead with my superintendent comments for the.
Yes, forgive me, everyone, for being tardy. I was running late for work anyway. And then there was traffic. And it was bad. I sat there for 10 minutes, so forgive me. And then also, I think maybe you've announced that Mr. English is not going to join us this evening. He had an issue as well, so sorry to the board, sorry to everyone else. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So superintendent remarks, I've got quite a few things and keeping on the, keeping on the positivity. We've got a lot of great things going on and a lot of things to celebrate in our district. So I think it's always important that we start off with those celebrations. This evening, we'll celebrate those teachers. You notice how full we are in the house. We'll celebrate those teachers that have achieved high-growth bonuses. As we celebrate those, we must be reminded of the teachers who may not be in a field in the state that recognizes growth. And I know there's a number of those folks, particularly in the elementary grades. And then in some of those areas that aren't tested, they, they need some recognition as well, but the state, they recognize the growth piece, so we'll be doing that tonight. We'll also recognize our most recent accomplishments for our national board-certified staff, and we're excited to have those folks with us tonight. And when you've got staff that are, that are doing great things, it's no wonder that you have six of our local students, candidates, who received the prestigious selection from our local level to represent us at Governor's School. Of those six, three of them were selected to participate in Governor's School. And that is Evangeline Thomas, Kevin Rodriguez Ramirez. Those students are both at MEC. And Elise Pritchard, who is at McDowell High School. We're very excited about those students going on to represent us. We've got a lot of, a lot of things to be positive about. We talked last time about our basketball teams. We, they hadn't played the games, but we knew that they were on a roll. We had four basketball teams in the conference championship games where all four teams, or three of the four teams won titles. I don't know that that's ever happened before. That was followed by a berth in the state playoffs for our men's and women's teams, where our Lady Titans advanced to the second round in the state playoffs. We're also proud, and you just heard from our NJ ROTC team, they're one of 28 in the nation. And technically, they've already placed third in the nation in the naval portion of that. So the one that they're going to next in Ohio next week, that is an all-service competition. So we're excited for them, and they'll represent the Navy as well as McDowell County Schools. Our CTE programs have been busy earning numerous regional titles. So many, so many that we'd have to have a list as long as we've got of teachers out there to go through those. But those include the amazing shake finals in Atlanta that'll be coming up. And not to mention our math and regional science winners that were representing us in the state competition this spring. They're all seeking state titles. I can't see what kind of hardware they bring back to us. March Madness, Mr. Suddles, March Madness is not just about ACC basketball. All right, I think, I think our kids are gonna go out and bring some hardware home in some of these events as well, and I'm excited about it. We'd like to welcome home Mr. Spivey. I know, and the kids from Germany, he's, he's back there in the back. He might, he might be awake. I think they spent 25 hours, 26 hours yesterday in commute trying to get back to the States, and we're glad that they're back with us. They had a great trip that included a railway strike, so you never know what you're gonna run into. So, but fortunately, they had Mr. Spivey at the helm, and he had planned for everything. I don't know, Mr. Spivey, did you plan for a railway strike? Well, you made it seem like you did. We appreciate it. It's, it's, it's a great trip. It's an honor to be able to have our kids go to Germany, just like the kids come here during, during the fall. And we hope to continue that, that going on. So if you guys see Mr. Spivey asleep back there, just nudge him. Wake him up. We just need to make sure he's with, at the meeting with us. Also want to recognize Ms. Hamby and Ms. Rampy for leading our team. This one I'm really excited about. In an Ellis, that's a state-level grant, where they earned a million bucks for us. So we're excited about that. That money will be available to us beginning this year. And that'll, that'll help support our after-schools programs as well as our upcoming and new alternative school for next year. And it'll, it'll provide a couple of positions as well, so we're grateful for that. And we, we want to continue that as far as being able to earn more grants. I say that when we found out we earned the Elise Grant or Ellis Grant. There's a couple of different ways you can say it, so I'll just say both. But when we learned about that, we were actually in a meeting to, to apply for another grant. The one that we're applying for is a $15 million mental health grant. So there's no rest for the weary. We found out we got one, and we were already applying for the next one. And we're really doing that because those federal COVID dollars, folks, that we've, that we've been so fortunate to have in our district as well as across the state, those are beginning to wane. And, you know, come, come fall, we have to have those funds expended. So I have really pushed our team to, to be out there and trying to find other avenues to bring in funding for our school district. They're burning the candle at both ends. When I say that, I would be remiss if I didn't mention our CTE programs. And Ms. Finley and the amount of money that she's been able to bring in through CTE. You're gonna see a number of CTE teachers getting recognized here tonight. There's no, there's, there's a reason why. When you've got great leadership in those, in those positions, good things happen. And we certainly have that, as well as Ms. MacArthur for receiving another $100,000 grant. So all that's came in in the past, really about the past week. So those, those are, those are all things to be positive about. And all these grants and our funding were seeking directly tied to our strategic plan, which was developed under the board's guidance and through the work of our principals and leadership staff. Our teams work, our teams work hard to stay focused on our goals and think creatively when seeking funding. I'm proud of this work and grateful for our leadership and the teams on the executive cabinet. Thank you, folks. We've, we've also heard that our friends at the community college are ready to move forward with that hire of a community college president, which is exciting for us. That, they obviously can't announce that yet because that has to go before the, before their state board. But in the coming weeks, that should be announced for the community, and we're excited about that. We're excited about continuing that partnership, and to be completely honest with you, that offers another opportunity for us to partner with, with an outside agency to be able to earn some more grant dollars. So if you haven't, if you hadn't picked up on it, March becomes a grant thing. So that is really the time of the, the time of the year it is. Also, our kindergarten registration, huge success this week. Numbers are up overall for this year, and we're excited about that. So that's always a positive, and I know the board of you guys look forward to hearing that. Our team is also working through an administrative book review, where our school-level intact teams are working to review the books on hold. As they begin to make recommendations to our district-level community team, it is important to note that no one group will determine the outcome of this work. As I've stated before, we strive for a model to mirror the language from the US Supreme Court's 1984 PICO case, where contemporary community standard will drive the work. As we begin to develop the county, community, administrative committees and review books, we also need to seek the board's support in developing policies that will allow parents to opt out of materials for children. Our team recognizes the work that will take some time, and we know there can be a line in the sands on both sides of this argument. I am proud to be in a society where we can find a balance with our great nation's democracy, which is a shining example of how to proceed with such issues. We ask for patience in this administrative review as we seek ways to include our community in the democratic process. It's also important to remember that the work is over and above regular job duties for our staff, and we recognize and appreciate the additional work that our staff are doing as part of this team. Finally, tonight, I want to recognize the challenge facing our district over the last weeks. In instances such as the arrest of a counselor and a volleyball coach, the level of betrayal that is involved is unfathomable. Our thoughts and prayers are with the victim and family this evening. We strive to keep our students safe in all instances. And when such, when such atrocities occur, we are left with unanswered questions and a great deal of healing. We are grateful to our partners at the Sheriff's Office, the State Bureau of Investigation for taking such swift action. Community, I encourage you to pause to recognize that a child is involved, which means we should show compassion, kindness, and reservation in our remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Grit. I appreciate that. I'm gonna actually turn it right back on over to you and your team, as we have a whole lot of staff recognitions to do this evening. We're very excited about this portion. We know that our staff continues to work very, very hard on their professional development to ensure that they're providing the best they can for our students, and so really grateful for that.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education, Ms. Pupo, Dr. Grit, and distinguished guests. Tonight, I am honored to stand before you to recognize and celebrate some of our most valuable assets, our teachers. First and foremost, I want to extend our sincerest congratulations to those educators who have recently attained their national board certification. This achievement is not nearly, nearly a testament to their dedication and expertise, but also a reflection of their commitment to excellence in the field of education. For those who may not be familiar, national board certification is a voluntary advanced teaching credential that surpasses state licensure requirements. It sets rigorous national standards for what accomplished teachers should know and be, and be capable of achieving. The certification process administered by the National Board of Professional Teaching Standards entails candidates completing four components. Three portfolio entries submitted online, along with a computer-based assessment conducted as a designated testing center. Now that sounds like that's just a couple journal entries that you put in. No, we're talking about constant reflection on teaching, constant reflection on students and students' achievement. It is a very entailed and many times two- to three-year process. The significance of national board certification can't be overstated. It stands as the pinnacle of professional certification in education, commanding respect and recognition within the field. Yet its impact extends far beyond individual teachers. It benefits students and schools alike by fostering the development, retention, and acknowledgement of accomplished educators. National board certification plays a pivotal role in driving ongoing improvement across our educational institutions nationwide. As we gather tonight, let us not only celebrate the achievements of our newly-certified teachers, but also affirm our collective commitment to supporting and nurturing excellence in education. Together, we can continue to empower our teachers, inspire our students, and elevate the standard of education in our community. Please join me in recognizing and applauding the following teachers. We have Ms. Paige Gomez from West Marion Elementary School. Ms. Anna Green from West Marion Elementary School. Ms. Amber Howe from Bloomwood Elementary School. And Ms. Amber Lawing from McDowell Early College. I can speak from personal experience with all three of these ladies, as I had the honor of working with them as their principal at both Bloomwood Elementary and West Marion Elementary. And this honor is greatly, greatly deserved, so congratulations, ladies.
I think, I think too, if I could just speak really quickly. Again, I know, know all three of you guys really well, and, and as a classroom teacher, I understand the commitment that it takes, not only from you, but also from your families. Just the amount of time that you had to work to do this. I tried for my national boards, did not receive them, so just extremely proud of you and just thankful for what you bring to our county, what you bring to our kids, and, and just to see you three as colleagues. I'm just really proud of y'all.
Again, like I said, I get to stand before you today with great enthusiasm and pride to celebrate and reward excellence in teaching. As educators, we understand the pivotal role that teachers play in shaping the academic success of our students. And today, I get to present and recognize the remarkable achievements of our teachers. First up, we have our CTE bonus recognition. So students can earn at least one industrial-recognized credential in every CTE pathway at McDowell High School. Achieving an industry-recognized certification or credential ensures that students graduate from high school globally competitive for work and post-secondary education. An industry-recognized certification or credentials helps businesses save many hours of training because their new hire is already trained. Be confident that the credential holder has already learned a specific set of skills. An industry-recognized certification or credentials helps students validate their knowledge and skill attainment with an industry-recognized certification. Stand out in the field of job applicants and start at a higher salary level. Some credentials offer bonuses, incentives for CTE teachers who provide instruction in a course that leads to student attainment of an industry-certified certification or credential. These MHS CTE teachers earn bonuses for the 23, 22, 23 school year by having students earn the following credentials. First up, we have Mr. Clark Adams with Veterinary Medical Application Certification. Ms. Angie Allison, Certified Guest Service Professional. Mr. Charles Autry, FEMA Emergency Management Institute and NECI 911 Basic Communications. Mr. Chad Brewer, the National Center for Construction Education and Research, Construction Corps and Masonry. Ms. Kristen Clark with Accredited Food Protection Manager, Safe Plates. She couldn't not be here this evening. Mr. Charlie Davis for Woodwork Career Alliance Saw Blade Certification. Mr. Paul Davis ASE Entry Level Certification, Maintenance and Light Repair. Mr. Chris Marsh, National Law Enforcement Certification. And he is at Tin Court tonight, running part of his program, so he cannot be with us, but let's give him a round of applause. Mr. Barry McPeters, FEMA Emergency Management Institute. Mr. Wesley Minish, Adobe Photoshop Illustrator and End Design. Mr. Todd Queen, Customer Service and Sales Certification. He is coaching softball tonight and is not here, but let's give him a round of applause. Mr. Keith Scholes, AWS Sense Entry Level Welder Program, Shielded Metal Arc Welding, and Certified Production Technician and Safety, Maintenance Awareness, and Manufacturing Processes. Ms. Stacy Shaw, North Carolina Early Childhood Credential. Mr. Daniel Smith, Autodesk 3DS Max. Thank you all so much for your hard work. Let's get a picture, and let's give them a big round of applause. Thank you all so much. One of my favorite things when I go to job fairs and teachers tell me they are CTE teachers, then I get to brag that McDowell County Schools is known not only statewide, but nationally. And so everybody's head kind of turns to me, so I, I enjoy that and enjoy bragging on our programs and how hard our teachers work. Our second set of recognition is for our AP or Advanced Placement Course teachers. AP classes are taught at a rigorous level and help prepare students for college-level courses. Students may earn college credit by taking and passing the AP test with a three, four, or five. Our AP teachers receive a bonus based on student performance in their class. A teacher may earn $50 per student or up to $3,500 per year. The teachers listed below earned a bonus in the following classes. I do not believe that any of our AP course teachers could come this evening, so I'd just like to read out their name. And then at the end, they still deserve recognition even though they couldn't be here. We have Ms. Jolie Weaver with AP Biology. Ms. Dusty Joseph Fehak with AP English Language Arts. Seth Hunt, AP Literature. Jennifer Gant, AP Statistics. Missy Redman, AP Government. Victoria Hudson, AP US History. Stuart Massey, AP US History. And Julie Grandseth with AP World History. So let's give them a round of applause. Last but certainly not least, we want to recognize teachers in grades three through eight who received a growth bonus based on the 22-23 school year. The growth bonus recognizes teachers in third through eighth grade reading and fourth through eighth grade in math with, whose growth index is in the top 25% of the state of North Carolina or, and/or the top 25% of McDowell County Schools. In many grade levels within our district, it was easier to be the top. In many grade levels within our district, it was easier to be the top twenty-five percent in the state of North Carolina versus the top twenty-five percent in our district, which speaks highly of our teachers. The following teachers are being recognized for the top growth in third grade reading. Ms. Tina Flynn, top twenty-five percent in the state and the L E A. Right here, there you go. Ms. Wendy Davis, top twenty-five percent in the state and twenty-five percent in the L E A. Dana Yelton, top twenty-five percent in the state and top, top twenty-five percent in the L E A. Michelle Ravis, top twenty-five percent in the state and top twenty-five percent in the L E A. Felicia Stamey, top twenty-five percent in the state, top twenty-five percent in the L E A. Ms. Jennifer Sloan, top twenty-five percent in the state and top twenty-five percent in the L E A. Ms. Sloan could not be here this evening. And then Ms. Heather Sprouse, top twenty-five percent in the state and twenty-five percent in the L E A. Next up, we have our fourth through eighth grade reading. Ms. Courtney Putnam, top twenty-five percent in the state and top twenty-five percent in the L E A. Ms. Lisa Burleson, top twenty-five percent in the state and top twenty-five percent in the L E A, and Ms. Burleson could not be with us tonight. Ms. Jennifer Blake, top twenty-five percent of the L E A, and she's unable to be here as well. Ms. Olivia Moore, top twenty-five percent in the state and top twenty-five percent in the L E A. Ms. Barbara Dyer, top twenty-five percent in the state and top twenty-five percent in the L E A. And I will also add that Ms. Dyer taught fourth and fifth grade reading and received actually four growth bonuses, but the state only allows two per grade level, so that is still a huge accomplishment. Ms. Jessica Major, top twenty-five percent in the state and top twenty-five percent in the L E A. Deborah Freeman, top twenty-five percent in the state and top twenty-five percent in the L E A. Ms. Allison Wrightout, top twenty-five percent in the state and top twenty-five percent in the L E A. She just got married Saturday, so she is not here with us this evening. Now for our fourth through eighth grade math, we have Catherine Page Brown, top twenty-five percent in the state and top twenty-five percent in the L E A. We have Ms. Sarah Rice, top twenty-five percent in the state and top twenty-five percent in the L E A. Ms. Cheryl Mulvey, top twenty-five percent in the state. Ms. Ashley Hightower, top twenty-five percent in the L E A. We have our very own McDowell County Schools Teacher of the Year, Ms. Mary Ann Basney, top twenty-five percent in the state. Ms. Shannon Chafin, top twenty-five percent in the L E A. Ms. Lori Petit, top twenty-five percent in the state and top twenty-five percent in the L E A, she's unable to be with us. We have Ms. Taylor Stover, top twenty-five percent in the state and top twenty-five percent in the L E A. Ms. Holly Woody, top twenty-five percent in the L E A. Ms. Jennifer Carrolls, top twenty-five percent in the state and top twenty-five percent in the L E A. We have Ms. Jessica Major, who is already up here for a bonus in reading, received top twenty-five percent in the L E A as well. Ms. Allison Wrightout also received both twenty-five percent in the L E A and twenty-five percent in the state in both reading and math, so that's a huge accomplishment in both, in both areas. Next, we have Ms. Katie Carter, top twenty-five percent in the state and top twenty-five percent of the L E A. Ms. Carter couldn't be here this evening. We have Ms. Christina Parton, top twenty-five percent in the state. And last but certainly not least, Ms. Alicia Burnett, she had the top twenty-five percent in the state and top twenty-five percent in our L E A, and Ms. Burnett could not be with us this evening. So let's give all of these folks a big round of applause. So as Dr. Grant is getting everyone ready for a picture, I just want to emphasize what a huge accomplishment that growth is. I'm usually the loudest one in the room. I'd like to just kind of share with you about how difficult growth is. Growth is the measure from when students enter your classroom to when they're late leave. So regardless of where they're at, what you try to do is get a year's worth of growth. These folks standing in front of you exceeded that, meaning that they did more than a year's worth of growth for a snippet again amount, if not for all of their students. So what a huge accomplishment, and we appreciate your dedication and hard work. Thank you, guys.
And, and before you leave, the CTE teachers got gone, before I had the opportunity to say, but, but I, I want to just reiterate again, good things are happening all day, every day in every classroom in McDowell County Schools, and this is just a small snippet of what goes on. Nobody knows that, what you do, but I, I want you to understand how thankful our board is for the teaching staff that we have in McDowell County Schools, and I thank you so much for what you do for our kids, because if we, if you didn't do what you did for our kids, none of us would need to be here. So thank you once again for just, for what you do. I appreciate you. Thank you. Congratulations.
If I could too, I, as there's, we're just kind of transitioning, I just want to point out the number of teachers that we see consistently year after year after year who hit that bonus level and hit that level of growth consistently for their stu-, their students, as well as the new teachers who are in and they're working very hard to do that. Another thing I wanted to point out is that those teachers that are standing here are only, correct me if I'm wrong, but they're only third grade and above. And, and so who gets kind of left out of this is our kindergarten, our preschool, kindergarten, first and second grade teachers who really lay the foundational work for our third and fourth and beyond in order to succeed in the way that they are and to hit those high numbers. And so I just want to publicly thank our kindergarten, our first grade, our second grade, our pre-K teachers for all of the tremendous work that they put in every day that goes unnoticed, unrecognized, unbonused every year, acknowledging the, the hard work that they're doing, and that we know that they're laying the foundation for these bonuses up here. And so thank you to them. I'm sorry that you don't, we want to bring you up here too, so thank you so much.
Absolutely, a house without a strong finda-, foundation can't stand, and so definitely our pre-K, kindergarten, first and second grade teachers, along with our special area teachers when you're talking about music and P E, and God, it's all of that goes into building that strong foundation all the way through, so we are very, very thankful for the work that they do. So you all get to stay with me for just a few more minutes while I get to recognize several of the things that I love to do the most, and that's number one, is recognize the teachers that work day in and day out, because when you are a teacher, it's a calling and it's a work of the heart, and that's what I always see myself, even as a district administrator, really as a teacher. That is my heart. And so the second thing that I love to talk about most is teacher recruitment as well as growing our own. So I'll speak to you and not, tonight about our McDowell County Schools Homegrown Program, and I'm going to ask Mr. Garrett if he doesn't care to pull that presentation up, please. All right, if not, then I'm just going to go ahead and talk through this. That's okay, I can go on the fly. I don't need, I don't need anything on the, the screen, I could talk this all night. I won't, I promise. So I want to talk with you about current opportunities that we have here in McDowell County for staffing. So when I first came into the profession twenty-three years ago, I know I don't look that old, but I dye my hair, but I have been in for twenty-three years, finding a job as a teacher was very, very difficult because there seemed to be a ton of folks going into that field. Since COVID, there's really been a struggle for those to go into the teaching profession, and I don't think it's just teaching in general that that's an issue for, my husband's a lieutenant with the Highway Patrol, they've had the same issue, and as you talk to companies and through businesses throughout our community, they will express those same type of concerns. And so we have to look at that and think, what can we do to inspire and to help to motivate folks to go into education? And so I'm going to start with some current opportunities that we have here in McDowell County to help support folks within our own buildings and within our community to go into education. So currently, right now, McDowell County Schools has, is in the Teacher-to-T A Pilot Program, so that means that anyone in our schools that is a teacher assistant, if they are interested in going into teaching, then there is a reimbursement program from the state of North Carolina that will reimburse them up to forty-six hundred dollars to, towards tuition to go back to school. McDowell County Schools is in that pilot, and actually this year, they allotted more money from the state of North Carolina, so that allowed us to be able to offer that opportunity to more folks, and right now, we have seven people that are taking advantage of that Teacher-to-T A reimbursement. For this upcoming year, McDowell County High School will be offering a Teacher Cadet Program, along with an apprenticeship program that will follow along with that, so meaning that folks, as it's CTE course, students are able to take this Teacher Cadet Program, and in their third semester are actually able to have a paid pre-apprenticeship program. And so that's just some exciting news that is already in place and already started within our district. Another thing that I am very, very proud of, and I'm going to give Ms. Alyssa Canine huge credit for this, is that our Beginning Teacher Support Program and Retention, we currently have a ninety-three percent retention rate, which over, of average looking across the state is one of the highest. Now, our goal is ninety-five percent in our strategic plan, and we are working to accomplish that, but that's a great feat, and we've had several folks tell us that have started teaching in different districts and have come to our district, that if they had gotten support in their prior district, then they would not have left. So we are very fortunate that we have this type of support for our beginning teachers and teachers that are coming into the field that have never been in a teacher program, so that's very exciting. The benefits of a homegrown program are, number one, sustained workforce. We can seek out what we, we can seek out those that are interested, and we can keep them in, within our schools. We can utilize community resources, what we have right here at our fingertips. We can do on-the-job training. We have the ability to invest in our community, and we can offer assistance for that. Oh, good, there we go. Awesome.
Garrett, I think we're on that slide with the Appalachian logo.
So what is?
I wanted to point that out for us.
So what is a homegrown program? Well, a homegrown program is where we focus on the folks that are currently in our community and currently in our schools. We are partner, partnering with Appalachian State University as well as McDowell Technical Community College to work through this program, and the things that I'm getting ready to share are very, very exciting. So the program goals here is for McDowell County Schools Homegrown Teacher Program expects to develop up to five teachers per year through a partnership with McDowell Tech and Appalachian State University. Students who take advantage of this program will earn a teacher certificate from an accredited university in a very affordable fashion. McDowell County Schools expects to reduce the need to hire teachers without a clear license, and McDowell County Schools also hopes to gain a diverse teaching staff to contribute to our schools for generations. So currently, Dr. Grant and I were able to meet with Appalachian State University and also McDowell Technical Community, Community College to talk about what avenues that folks within our district, whether they be students, whether they be employees, whether they be someone that has moved here, what avenues do we have to help them, to support them in this program? And so one very great thing that we were shared, that was shared with us was about the Aspire Agreement, meaning that Appalachian State and McDowell Technical Community College have, are working on an agreement so that any student that goes to McDowell Tech has an automatic accepts, acceptance to Appalachian State University. So that really helps to remove some of the barriers as far as when you're looking at applying to colleges, that type of thing, it takes that step out of the way. We're also able at McDowell Tech, they will be working on doing a two-year teacher program that will marry directly into the four-year teaching program, so it would be two years at McDowell Tech and then an automatic two years at Appalachian State University. Another plus to this partnership is that they're going to offer programming in many different ways. It can be on campus, it can be at the Hickory Campus, or it can be online through the Hickory Campus. So this really allows for different type of folks, whether you're working a full-time job and you need to go pack only part-time, they have a part-time program that can still help to earn that degree in that two years at McDowell Tech and two years at Appalachian State. So it's really helps to make the needs of a diverse group of folks. So eligibility to, of the program, what does that look like? Well, students need to have completed a minimum of one year with McDowell Technical Community College, and an associate's degree is preferred. Current employees are eligible to participate in the program and may do so without attendance to McDowell Tech, so that's not required, but that's just a resource that's right at our back door that can be utilized. To be eligible for the College of Education with ASU, students must complete the designated pathways, and we have all of that laid out for folks when they are looking at applying. We are looking at, and I've got ten written there, but we're really trying to small, start out a little bit smaller till we pick up a little bit of, of speed with this, and so we're really, our goal is to do five students per year would be eligible for the program. And then if we have more than that, then what we would do is that we would go through an app, we would go through an interview process and really try to, to work with folks to get into that program, so we're, we're very excited about that. The eligibility for reimbursement is that students must meet all four requirements listed below, and they will receive a five-hundred-dollar tuition reimbursement for up to five semesters. So that five-hundred dollars can be used towards tuition, but it also could be used towards gas if you're traveling, it could be used towards books, so it's just an incentive to help folks as they are pursuing this. So students shall be enrolled at the ASU College of Education, they must maintain a two-point-seven GPA, and students shall student teach with McDowell County Schools. We would also have students sign an early contract agreeing to teach with McDowell County Schools for a minimum of three year, three years. So if a student were to do that but did not follow through on that, then they would have to pay that money back, but as long as they followed through with that, they stayed within McDowell County Schools for those three years, then they would be able to receive and keep the incentive. So what are the benefits for students? Well, the completion of associate's degree with McDowell Tech offers the first two years of college for free to high school students. So if you think about early college, they are already coming out with their two-year degree, they can choose to do that through that program. That is also available at McDowell High School to be able to take those courses as well. Students may earn that tuition reimbursement of five-hundred dollars per semester. ASU students can remain at home and commute to campus, and that saves a ton of money on student housing. Returning home for student teaching offers students the opportunity to stay with family and reduce living costs, since student teaching does not pay, so that just also is another benefit. And the McDowell County Schools guarantees a And then McDowell County Schools, um, guarantees initial employment for McDowell County, um, teachers for signing an early contract and receiving tuition reimbursement. And then we have student loan forgiveness following five years of teaching in all Title I eligible schools, which are, we are a Title I district, so that would be something that would be offered to them as well. So that was a whole lot of information. Um, Dr. Grant, um, talked about, um, and I, I was gonna steal his idea, but I'll give you credit, Dr. Grant. You know, a pipeline seems to go one way, but what we want to see is a U-shaped pipeline. So we want to see our students go to McDowell Tech or go to another institution, move into the College of Ed, and then come right straight back to us. So that is what our goal is with our homegrown, um, program, is to really support those in our district and really to remove barriers, um, and to make college possible for anyone who is interested. And so we are thankful for McDowell Tech. We are thankful for our partnership with Appalachian. We do have partnership with Western Carolina University, uh, Mr. Suddles. But, um, Appalachian came in and met with us and was very excited about serving our community as well. So we're, we're very thankful. Are there questions for me or for Dr. Grant?
Awesome.
No, thank you. This is very, very exciting for our district and opportunities for our students particularly, and parents that are out there. If you're listening at all, understand what that means, is that your children have an opportunity to receive a tremendous amount of funding in order to get their education in teaching so that they can come on back home to you and, and then serve our district, and they've got jobs available. So this is, this is an exciting thing for us. Thank you so much for working on this.
Absolutely. Thank you. It, it, it is very exciting, not only, um, for our, our community, but exciting for our students, um, to have, um, folks in their building that, um, are familiar with the community and, and want to come back. And that was my goal when I went off, um, to school, is I wanted to come back and serve my community. Um, but coming from a, a family of educators, um, this is a calling, and that's, that's what we want. We want people who want to make a difference and, and serve our community. So thank you very much.
Ms. Suddles, to, to, thank you. Just want to add, folks, that, um, the, the goal would be to be eligible for the program in the fall. Uh, so we're working with our attorneys right now on the MOUs, um, between Appalachian State and, and us. And, um, we, we could have students that enter the College of Education in the fall and earn that tuition reimbursement in January. So we're, we're ready to go just as soon as, um, as soon as the students are in those classes.
Great. Thank you so much. Good news. Ms. Basni, uh, report from Teacher Representative, Teacher of the Year, if you will. Thank you.
So this month, I get to recognize East McDowell Middle School, so this one's super exciting for me. Lots of my students are highlighted in here and a lot of the great things happening at East. First up, we had a variety show last month. Um, the next two slides are photos from that. We had the Dino Band. We had several acts from students and teachers. We had, um, we had a wonderful turnout. This was a huge success. We had raffle baskets that grade levels and departments created, and we raffled those off. And, uh, we had concessions. We had a great time in a full house. The proceeds for some of the raffle baskets went towards one of our teachers who bat, who's battling cancer right now. I listed some CTE and elective recognition, and there's lots of great things happening. I know we talked about the high school earlier, but lots of great things in middle school as well. Ms. Merritt has received a popcorn boards, popcorn pep club grant. I really had to struggle with that one, but this is for seventh-grade students, and they prepped all these popcorn bags. They sent these home with families. Um, I think this was right before Christmas. And I have a couple pictures of them assembling and passing them out, and it came home with some directions for, uh, popcorn to take home. Um, I have a little bit about band. These are three students that were from our all-district, that were able to go, I'm sorry, to our all-district band at Western Carolina University. They auditioned and attended at Western for this. And one of my students is pictured, they gave me a little bit of what, what they do at this, and it's a ton of work. So I, I'm, I'm gonna try really hard to not mess this up, but they have to present a solo, memorize six to seven scales and perform. They sight-read a new piece of music and play it after roughly a minute of reviewing it. When they're at Western, they have five pieces of music to learn. They get a few weeks to practice, but then they jump in with a whole group of people they haven't met, some they may know, they may not. Um, they work on new music for the days they're there, and then they also have a concert at Western Carolina University. I know Mr. Wilson is here. I hope that is close. Wonderful. And they also got to see the Western Carolina Band Program, which is phenomenal up there. Um, also, I know you guys are gonna hear from, uh, some other music areas in our chorus department, but I wanted to touch on just a couple quick things with chorus. We have Ms. Frye, who's been at East, and she has provided our, our students with several community performance opportunities in chorus, and we also have a junior try-in honor society. Um, so they also have to be involved in music, but they are also required to maintain a B or above in core classes and an A in band or chorus. They've had several opportunities to go out into the community with the Mount Glory Festival. They've gone to Autumn Care and a few other, um, retirement homes and facilities. They've had their spring and chorus concerts and fall concerts, and then they also performed in the Veterans Day Program. The next couple slides are some of our winter sports. We have, our East and West cheerleaders collaborated for, um, one of the basketball games. They had a blast with this, and they were able to have a whole routine that they went through for one of the halftime shows. We also have a few photos from our basketball games. Um, one of our wrestlers made it pretty far with the, um, the regional wrestling, and our basketball teams did wonderful. We recently had student-led conferences. They have been wonderful at East. These were held last week for our spring session, and parents were able to sign up, whether they want their student to give their information, go over, um, their progress, their grades, their successes, or they could sit down with the teacher if they chose to, or they could do both. And we've had a great turnout with these. Parents and students both have enjoyed them. We have started something new at East called First Chapter Friday. Staff members from, um, around the building come to each homeroom, and they read the first chapter of one of their favorite books to, to whatever class that may be. And this gets our students interested in books they may not pick on their own, and it gives staff members a chance to come into classrooms and make connections with students. And one of our board members has come to, uh, read, I believe it was a sixth-grade class, um, and came and read to one of our homerooms as well. We are utilizing a program called Power Up. We also have several tutoring opportunities. Um, the Power Up Program has, has been a great start. I, I love data, and I love digging into all the data that it's provided, but teachers are able to use this program with students, track students' progress, look at their reading comprehension, look at the progress they've made along the way with, with those skills as well, and look at lessons that they may need to create, um, materials provided to them through this. So it's been a great aid as far as reading comprehension goes. Our Science Olympiad teams competed at UNCA recently, and they had a wonderful time. Our Life Skills and Discovery Skills class will go, um, April eighteenth, and they will participate with Rutherford County Special Olympics. On that left picture, they have gone to art class for the last several weeks. They read Rainbow Fish, and they designed their own fish. They also had Read Across America Day, yes, last, I'm sorry, last week. Staff members were able to go and read to our classes in time slots throughout the morning, and that was the best. I was able to go in and read to them Friday morning, and we had a great time. Next month, I will highlight Glenwood Elementary and Nebo Elementary.
Thank you so much, Ms. Basni. All right, it looks like next we have Celebrating Music in Our Schools Month. Elementary and secondary students and educators, I'm not sure. Thank you, Ms. Frye. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. So at this time, I'm gonna invite our junior try-in Music Honor Society leadership to come up, uh, while we're doing this transition. And at the same time, if all of our singers in elementary and secondary, um, education here in McDowell County could come to the front, and music lingo, if part one could be on this side and part two on this side, go ahead and start transitioning as I'm just kind of introing into this Music in Our Schools Month. So thank you so much, Dr. Grant, the board, administration, um, our principal, Ms. Tracy Widman, and all of the music educators that are in the county for allowing us, for allowing us to put together this presentation, uh, and for allowing us to perform a, uh, a beautiful song for you this evening, and we just have so much to celebrate. I'm not gonna spoil any of it. I will let our student leadership come and speak here in just a moment after we transition.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing us to speak this evening on behalf of the music programs in McDowell County. My name is Kaylee Gonzalez, and I am the McDowell Middle School's Junior Try-In President.
I'm Destiny Cooper Gaines, and I am the secretary.
I'm Eric Holmes, and I'm the treasurer.
We have chosen to present in March because it is in Music in Our Schools Month.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Ava Effler. I am freshman at McDowell High School. So what is our long-term goal in light of the positive education programs, music education programs in our county? We, as music students, would like to request that as a long-term goal, the students of McDowell County be provided with certified music teachers in each elementary school. Create an equal opportunities for each student to be positively impacted by music educations from grades K through fifth. Each of us speaking tonight has been impacted by music in a way that prepares us for future success and ultimately encourages us to finish what we have started here in McDowell County. Um, so for me, the core program has really had a huge impact on a career path that I believe I have chosen. If it weren't for this wonderful program, I would still wonder, what do I want to do with the rest of my life? But now I'm working toward a career in music therapy, helping people mentally through the power of music. Thank you.
This month, we are advocating that each elementary, middle school, and high school of this county have the equal opportunity to learn music in some fashion, which will benefit more areas than just one. For example, our emotional, our social-emotional learning, daily attendance, communication skills, and even our test scores are all impacted by music.
A study published in two thousand and seven by Christopher Johnson, Professor of Music, Music Education and Music Therapy at the University of Kansas, revealed that students in elementary schools with superior music, music education programs scored around twenty-two percent higher in English and twenty percent higher in math scores on standardized tests compared to schools with low-quality music programs, regardless of socioeconomic disparities among schools or school districts.
Eighty-one point one percent of students agree that their secondary music class makes them look forward to attending school every day. Please look, take a few moments to review the results of these questions.
At this time, students from West Marion, Glenwood, and Eastfield Elementary School, East McDowell Middle School, and McDowell High School perform an Irish and English blessing titled Light of Grace.
Families and students, as you guys are leaving, just congratulations. That was beautiful. Thank you so much. Families and students, as you guys are leaving, just congratulations. That was beautiful. Thank you so much. Okay, I think we're about settled back in. Ms. Smith, are there, is there any correspondence for this evening? Okay, thank you. So then, we're gonna shift into the requests to address the Board in public comment. We have six people who have submitted requests to address the Board this evening. And I'm gonna, I'm just gonna pu- put you in order here of the way that they came in. Forgive me if I mispronounce your name. Please correct me. I, I, I am happy to be corrected on that. So, the first who will go is Lynn Garrett, if you'll just wait one second, then Mr. Patrick Young, then Robert, it looks like Cordell? Cordell, thank you. Gabriel Thompson will go fourth. Ms. Sarah Skinner will go fifth, and then Neil Shunk? Shunky, thank you, will go sixth. But before anyone comes on up, I do have some rules and guidelines that we do adhere to here at the Board for the way that we handle public comment. And so I'm just gonna read through this, and I'm just gonna ask all of you who I named off that this is your rules for the night. And then I'll also tell you kind of the expectation from the Board as well. Public comment is a time for the Board to hear from community members regarding issues related to the McDowell County School District. We ask that everyone be, this is Mr. English, he wrote this. He uses the word "folks." So, we ask that folks be mindful. I'm not a "folks" kinda person personally, but we ask that everyone is mindful, that we encourage families of small children to attend our meetings and to watch, and watch our meetings online. And therefore, we res- we do respect the rights of speakers to give us their viewpoint on any issues related to the schools. However, we do balance those rights with the rights of families of young children when it comes to public comment. So, we ask that speakers make their points without making any explicit comments. It is not appropriate or permissible for teachers in our schools to read explicit material to young children, and in doing so, in public comment is not appropriate either. In addition to public comment, the public is welcome to send the Board emails through the Superintendent. As far as everyone else is concerned, and every, our speakers, no speaker may be disruptive, no personal attacks on Board members or employees, no explicit comments. Anything that has, any complaints that has to do with students or staff needs to be addressed with the Superintendent privately, as that is confidential information. And as a reminder to the Board and to everyone else, based on our policy, 2310B, so we do, as Board members, will not respond to individuals who address the Board except to request clarification of any point made by a presenter. So, you, as presenters, have an opportunity to speak, and it is our responsibility as the Board just to hear you out and not offer any public, or any comment back. And so, we will go ahead and get started. You have three minutes. Ms. Dowdell is our handy-dandy fancy timer over there, and so, Lynn Garrett, you are welcome to go to the podium.
Adam Chair, we have to vote on that.
Oh, thank you so much. I appreciate that. Can I get a?
You motion.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we entertain the speakers, that we have listened to them.
I appreciate that. Thank you. So, I have a motion made by Mr. Frank, and a second by Mr. Schuford. All in favor, if you will show by right hand. Thank you. That's everyone. Alright.
Ms. Garrett's not here.
Oh, she's, she's, okay, she is not here? Okay, sounds good. Then we will go to Mr. Patrick Young. It's Mr. Patrick Young. Thank you.
I haven't done this in a long time, so y'all bear with me. As a retired band director for sixteen years at McDowell High School, and currently a parent of a high school musician, I'd like to truly thank the efforts of these fine young musicians and their wonderful teachers who were asked, young musicians, their wonderful teachers who were asked at the last minute to shorten their presentation down to five minutes due to the extensive agenda for tonight's meeting. I hope everyone else presenting tonight was able to do the same. They worked very hard the last couple of weeks to put together quality presentation, and they did so. And as musicians, they were able to improvise and make it awesome in half the time that they were prepared for. Thank you, students and teachers. March is Music in Our Schools Month, as they told you. We need more music in our schools. I retired from band directing in 2013. Also taught high school chorus for four years, including the COVID times. My wife was an elementary music teacher at Old Ford for twenty-three years, and was both middle school's chorus teacher for three years. A terrible compromise where each school only had chorus for one semester each year. Through the years when Jill was at Old Ford as a certified full-time music teacher, we, through the years, we had up to five certified full-time music teachers in the other elementary schools. As they retired or left McDowell County schools for better-paying jobs, some were replaced, some with split positions, and in some cases, they were not replaced at all. Music education seemed to not be a priority in the past. I'd like to see that change. We had a great turnout of that tonight. Jill taught the students to love music, and it showed. I could always tell which kids had come from Old Ford Elementary and the other schools that had certified music teachers. They had learned their basics sooner, and this translated into a higher level of achievement. Music teaches us all the skills that many programs in education are trying to do so artificially now. Teamwork, leadership, empathy, independence, multiple learning styles, work ethic, to mention a few. When a teacher gets a new roster of students and they see a band or chorus student, typically that teacher knows that they'll have a hard-working, success-driven student, and it will not be a behavior issue. Everyone knows the band or chorus kids are the best kids in the school. Some of us wear that as. In sixteen years of high school band directing, I had a 100% graduation rate of students that stayed in band. Many years, at least two or three, the top 2% of students were band kids. If we want to see large, successful mu- music programs at the high school level, then we have to encourage and promote the programs at the elementary and middle school levels. West should have a chorus teacher full-time. Students should not be deprived of choir music if they attend West, nor should they have to split that time with another arts course. Every elementary school should have a certified or qualified music teacher. COVID hurt us. Due to lack of specific instruction, due to protocols our county adopted, which eliminated band and chorus at the middle schools that year, we lost a huge portion of our music students. We have to recover from this. It is happening, thanks to the wonderful teachers, but slowly. We need more.
Thank you so much, Mr. Young. Alright, Mr. Cordell.
My name is Robert Cordell. I'm a father of a student in our public school system. I'm also a combat veteran of two deployments, and almost a decade of service to our great nation. Of all the things I did in the Army, I'm most proud of the time I spent helping to protect a girls' school while deployed to Afghanistan. I was periodically stationed in a guard tower for 240 Bravo machine gun overlooking the school. The Taliban had previously outlawed the education of all females over the age of eight. The penalty for disobeying that law was usually a gruesome execution. Watching how happy and thrilled those young girls were to go to school for the first time was the highlight of my time overseas. I knew if I had a second thought that I would lay my life down to protect those girls and their right to receive an education. I've witnessed firsthand what atrocities theocratic governments commit against their own citizens. You may think that we're far off from needing an armed guard to ensure your girls, young girls, don't get murdered for trying to learn how to read, but the erosion of our secular government and democracy as we know it doesn't happen overnight. It begins with small, seemingly innocuous things, like the banning of books. You can say that you're not banning books, but semantics aside, that is exactly what is going on, even if some people in this room are too cowardly to admit it. The now over eighty books that have been removed from our school libraries overwhelmingly deal with themes and issues faced by minority groups. Unlike the policies and practices of organizations like Christian Perspective Representatives, who are at the forefront of this book ban, the true fundamentals of Christianity and the teachings of Jesus Christ are antithetical to punching down on already marginalized children. We should strive as individuals and as a community to be more compassionate, empathetic, and welcoming of all people, as Jesus taught us. I did not fight the Taliban and Al Qaeda overseas to come home and watch as radical, right-wing nationalists infect our community with their anti-American, anti-democratic agendas. Our founding fathers knew that the separation of church and state was so fundamental to our democracy, they placed it in the very first line of the First Amendment. Furthermore, if this Board really cared about protecting our children from explicit and pornographic materials, then this conversation would be about computers and cell phones, not about books. I know a politician's usual remark to anyone who served is a "thank you for your service." That is not something I want to hear from any member of this Board or anyone else that supports the banning of books. You don't get to pander to those of us who served after you spit in the face of what we fought and died for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cordell. Ms. Thompson?
Hi, I'm Gabrielle Thompson, and I'm retired librarian with the state for twenty years. And I'm here to talk about book banning as well. I deem that one of the most important things in our educational system is free access to books that should be decided by a community. And I'm talking about impact teams that have librarians, teachers, students, parents, all coming together to discuss this issue. I'm sure most of you have had a librarian help you before to either find information you needed or to find pleasure reading. Librarians are known for being helpful, kind, and wanting to further education. There are many states nationwide that are restricting books. There are actually three states that are working on putting through criminal charges against librarians if books are checked out in a library to a child that someone deems obscene. Okay. One of those is West Virginia. They have a fifteen hundred dollar, or fifteen hundred people, teacher shortage, and it's one of the ones that's pushing this bill to penalize criminally librarians. I won't go on to the others, but actually, I would highly recommend to everyone to look up on YouTube what happened in Beaufort, South Carolina. It became a huge issue over, I think it was ninety-five books that were banned. CBS on Sixty Minutes, Scott Pelley on March 3rd did a whole report on it, talking about what happened. In that particular community, there was such an uprising that a hundred volunteers said they would read these books. And in that amount of time, they all voted on those ninety-five books. Only five were taken off the shelf. So, you have outside groups trying to take away individuals' rights. Each child has its own maturity level, its own intelligence level, and it needs its parents' involvement to pick what they can have as reading material. If they object to something, they can go to the librarians in that school and say, "I don't want my child to read this or books without my permission." That's the way to handle it in the school system, not saying that we just pull books haphazardly. And I thank you for letting me speak, and I hope that you will listen to librarians, teachers, parents, and everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Ms. Skinner?
Good evening, esteemed members of the School Board, and thank you for the opportunity to address you today. In the spirit of our recent International Women's Day, I'd like to talk for a moment about my mother, a state prosecutor in South Carolina, who played a pivotal role in my education. Due to the nature of her work, which was often horrific, she learned to talk to me about horrific things in an age-appropriate way. And one of the things that she did that I am most grateful for was she taught me to talk about my body parts with correct words. That protected me. I had a friend, and this is a story about a book that saved her life. I had a friend whose family did not, who did not talk to her about her body that way. And for the adults in the room, you can read between the lines, she was horrifically attacked in a family member's home at the age of twelve. At the age of twelve, my friend did not tell her mother or father, who loved her very much, because these were taboo subjects in her home. In high school, in 2002, a book called "The Lovely Bones" was published. "The Lovely Bones" dealt with the same horrific attack that my friend endured. And because of that book, she came to me and told me, because I was comfortable with talking about my body, and together, we went to one of our teachers. And because of our teachers, that man is behind bars. That is the power of a book, to save not just her life, but the life of other girls who were in that person's life or other children. There is no age minimum on that kind of attack. Books are knowledge. Books are power. And I would ask the Board to provide us a list of books that have been pulled from the shelves. In learning about the books that have been pulled, I've learned about the Pavement Education Project, and I was horrified to see that "The Lovely Bones" was one of the books that has been targeted because of its graphic content. I would also remind the Board that obscenity has a legal definition. The PICO case, the Supreme Court Island Trees District versus PICO, has been referenced several times. And the conclusion of that case is that local school boards have a substantial role to play in the determination of school library content. But their authority must be exercised in a manner that comports with the transcendent imperatives of the First Amendment. And by further federal cases, we also know that obscenity is not done by part of a book, but by looking at the book as a whole. "The Lovely Bones," as a whole, allowed my friend to find healing, and today, she is also a state prosecutor, where she protects other girls in this way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Skinner. Mr. Shunky?
You explained the rules for public input. Last time, our Chairman specifically stated explicit language will not be tolerated. He also requested that individuals conduct yourselves in such a manner that your grandmother would be proud of you. I believe these are good rules for writers. Just as profanity is not necessary to convey depth of emotion, graphic sexual details are not necessary to convey romance, excitement, or evil. Commercially, there are between half a million and a million books published every year. If you include self-published, that rises to three to four million. So, if you take a look at our public library, we only have one out of a hundred English books published. If you go to our McDowell High School, it's one out of a thousand. So, we should have the best books. I believe the concern here is not banning books, so much as that we should select the best books for our students to read and eliminate the trash. Books are food for the brain and food for the soul. Just as we set food standards for our cafeteria, we need standard standards for our school libraries. I was introduced to pornography in high school. And I'm not proud to say it, but it took me years to recover. Let us not intentionally wound our children. I'd like to take and see here, how many people are in general agreement? By a show of hands, how many parents here want their children, want their daughter to take, engage in casual sex out of a couple proportions? Be hooked on drugs? I don't think we're gonna have anybody. Are there any parents here that hope that their son or daughter will say, "I'm trans, I'm gender fluid, I'm sleeping around?" You know, if we don't want to hear it, we shouldn't encourage it by enticing entries in our schools. I think that's important. When we talk about books, is it enticing? One question that should be addressed is who has been choosing to put pornographic books in our schools and why? One of the typical actions of a pedophile is to break down inhibitions. Pedophiles often groom targets with sexualized material in order to normalize sex. So, do we have individuals who are trying to groom our children? By North Carolina law, every person eighteen years of age or older knowingly disseminates to any minor to any minor under the age of 16 any material which he knows or reasonably should know to be obscene is guilty of a felony. Now, as parents and grandparents, we'd expect that the law be firm protection against pornography in schools. Unfortunately, an exception was written to exempt schools. I propose that our community standard reflect the basic laws against obscenity without exception. Years ago, liberals, primarily Democrats, said we needed sex education in schools. By and large, we let them. But over time, these programs grew and morphed. It has gotten so bad now, some people can't even tell their gender by looking in their underwear or panties. It's time to stop the nonsense.
Thank you, Mr. Shunki. Appreciate all of the comments that we've received today. All right, we will move on now to unfinished business. I believe Mr. Brian Oliver will bring us a facilities update. Thank you, Ms. Dowdell.
Good evening, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Dr. Grit, school leaders, honored guests. Thank you for being here tonight. I normally give you a pretty in-depth update on facilities, but tonight, I'm going to keep it short. The one thing I do want to share with you is that the upgrades to the McDowell High School athletic facilities is more than halfway accomplished at this point, and we have transitioned now from the home locker rooms to the visitor locker rooms. And you saw some photos on Friday in Dr. Grit's update that, that give you an indication of where we're going at this time. So the, the efforts thus far have made a huge difference in the facilities at McDowell High School. We're very thankful for that, for our student athletes and our coaches, but also for our physical education students who also use those same locker rooms. So we're, we're really happy that, that those, those improvements are moving forward. I do want to brief you specifically tonight that the lease for the alternative site, which is the property at 75 Crawford Street, I think all of you received a copy of that lease and the date on Friday, and it has been signed by the property owner and is now ready for signature by the board chair, Mr. English, and Dr. Grit, so that it can be officiated. So as soon as that's accomplished, then we will be able to begin the work that we need to do to get the facility ready to be occupied by staff and students. And the goal, obviously, to have that ready by August.
Sir, I'll make a motion right now that we approve that contract.
We have a, a motion made by Mr. Frank to approve the alternative school lease. Do we have a second for that? With a second from Mr. Settles and all in favor, signed by right hand. That's unanimous. That passes. Thank you, Mr. Oliver.
Thank you. Boss, we good?
Do you want to stay up there and, or? That's right. Thank you. Mr. Frank, I do appreciate you, I do appreciate you letting me know. I, I, I am, I am not embarrassed. I, I admit that I am not an expert in Robert's Rules of Order and the way that we do this, but Mr. Frank is. He's been doing this for a very, very long time. So I am publicly giving you permission to make sure that I'm doing this correctly, and I ask that you would just go ahead and stop me when I've not. So what I did miss is any public or any discussion. And so if we need to back up for just a second, is there anything that anybody does want to say? If you do, we'll kind of back it up a second, but if not, we'll just go ahead and allow the motion to carry as is. Okay, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Dr. Grit. We good?
Yes, I, I really just want to thank Mr. Oliver for the behind-the-scenes work. There, there was a tremendous amount of work that went into that project. When we started down the road looking at the alternative school, I don't think we need, realized we needed all the approval that we needed, including from the Department of Public Instruction, all the way to the county commission, and, and, and up and including zoning from the city. So it's involved all the players, and Mr. Oliver, you've done a fantastic job. Rhonda Silver really, really looks after our school district, and she, she put together something that was good for us, and I think we need to publicly recognize the efforts, absolutely, the efforts that she put in allowing us to get into that building.
And I also want to thank Mr. Tranks and all of his work, providing us with the information of all the work that needed to be accomplished, and also a lot of back and forth with Mr. Ms. Silver in discussion about the property. And I also want to thank Mr. John Henning from Campbell Shatlet, who put in a tremendous amount of work and is still working on the, on the zoning issue, so.
Absolutely. And our board, I, I just appreciate you guys standing in there. When we talked about being able to get an alternative school open, I don't think any of us really knew how much time we were looking at, but, but I, but I said, "I think we're going to need a little bit of time." I had no clue it was going to be this much, but I just appreciate you guys working with us as well. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
And as a board, just to again state that this, we heard from our teachers and our staff last year who came to us and really communicated that there was a great need in our school because of some discipline issues and had really advocated for some alternative support, and this was what we had come up with. And so grateful for the superintendent and his team and all those that are involved in order to make this happen on behalf of the request of the board, but ultimately at the request of our, our teachers and in order to support what the work that's happening in the building. So thank you so much. Okay, next, we're going to move to the adoption of the math curriculum. Crystal Hamby, I'd like to come on up.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Grit. I stand before you on the behalf of our district curriculum and instruction team, K-8 school administrators, to request your approval to adopt a new K-8 math program. This program represents an exciting opportunity to transform our math instruction significantly and impact the academic success of our students. We want to emphasize the importance of strong mathematical skills in our students' educational journey. The administrative team has spent almost a year reviewing five math curriculums with input from teachers. After careful review, the team narrowed the choice down to two curriculums. In all grade levels, teachers reviewed these curriculums. A systemic rubric was used to evaluate all the mathematical components. Financially, adopting this program requires an initial investment, but it is important to recognize the long-term benefits and cost savings that can be realized. By equipping our students with a strong mathematical skills early on, we can mitigate the need for costly interventions and remediation in the future. Tonight, I am seeking approval for the district to spend up to $710,000 for a new K-8 math curriculum. The amount being requested is currently also being negotiated and is expected to be less than the amount we are requesting. At this time, I am requesting board action for approval to spend up to $710,000 for Great Minds Eureka Square. Are there any questions?
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion, and then we can have discussion after. As chairman of the Curriculum and Instruction Committee of the board, I would like to make a motion that we approve the K-8 math curriculum, Eureka Square, by Great Minds Publishing, as presented. It is recommended wholeheartedly, I believe, by our Curriculum and Instruction Committee, and gives the superintendent the authority to approve this purchase.
Thank you. We have a motion made by Ms. Silver for the approval of the adoption of the math curriculum. Can I get a second for that? Ms. Muma has a second? We will go ahead and open it up to discussion.
And I'd just like to reiterate what Ms. Hamby shared. This is a, a huge investment, but it's definitely something that we thought, we saw through the strategic plan that was presented to us, that math is an area that we, as a district, have got to focus on. And in our curriculum instruction meeting, we talked about the fact that it's almost like asking somebody to build a very productive garden and not give them any seeds, give them no tools, no prime dirt or anything, and expect results out of it. And it has been a significant amount of time, and Ms. Hamby and I, neither one could quite remember when we have, as a county, had a systematic math adoption. And so I, I think we had a, a good meeting with the curriculum instruction team that, you know, was able to discuss this. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion?
So I'm on the committee and agree with the, with the recommendation. I think the board needs to be clear that, and you correct me where I'm, where I'm in error, that the funds are initially being funded using ESRA funds, which might or will not be realized in, to the future. And I asked the question of the superintendent after our meeting, does this rise to the level of looking at competing programs and values and funding questions? Does this rise to the level of being a priority to the tune of $700,000? And he said that it did. I, I think that ought to be acknowledged, that a future board may sit here and be faced with coming up with other funds to continue the program. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, well, it looks like we're ready. So all in favor, if you will, display a show of hands by raising your right hand. Okay, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hamby. And just to reiterate on that, that question, Mr. Abernathy, that's a great question. You know, one of the things that I asked Ms. Hamby to do was to follow up with, with the folks at DPI to ensure that we could use our funding in our ESRA in such a manner. And those materials that will be purchased are purchased in advance, so there would not be as much of a cost in the future. That's, that's the goal with this program. And I have to say that I feel really good about the work that that team did. And honestly, folks, I'll just be completely honest, without, without the ESRA funding, I'm not sure we'd be able to adopt a math curriculum. So it's kind of a one-time deal to be able to go out and get that level without having to ask for a tremendous amount of money, or potentially, like we talked about earlier, be able to pull in a grant. So I, I appreciate Ms. Hamby and her, her efforts to take care of us. And really, I mean, it's, it's amazing to be able to pull in a, a, a language arts curriculum during this timeframe and, and also a math adoption. So your team, your team did a great job. Thank you.
And the, and the timing of it too is important, because the ESRA funding runs out. And so thank you for being proactive on that before we lose that money.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Dowdell, you have the Fall 2023 policy updates.
Yes, ma'am. So tonight is the final read of our fall policy updates. Each of these policies, as included in your packet, are state-required from general statute updates. We did not have any questions or feedback at our first read. I just wanted to follow up to see, prior to approving those, if there were any additional questions.
I think we're good.
All right.
Okay, so we, there is action requested that we approve the Fall 2023 policy updates. And so I will entertain a motion to approve those updates, policy updates.
So move.
Ms. Muma gives a, a motion, makes a motion?
Second.
All right. Ms., it's a little nerve-wracking to be doing this one. It was a last-minute thing. So here, I'm forgetting everybody's names. Ms. Angela Allen Hales makes the second on that. So we will open it up to discussion. Anyone? Okay, thank you. All right, everyone, if we will, if you will, show a hands for approval for this motion. And it carries. Thank you. All right, Mr. Oliver. Love to hear from you again, sir. Thank you, Ms. Dowdell.
Thanks, Bell.
Okay, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Dr. Grit, school leaders again, and honored guests, thank you for being here tonight. It gives me pleasure to speak to you again. This time, we talk about the school calendars that were presented for the first reading at last month's meeting. They've been on the website for the past month for consideration and discussion. And you were provided with all of the different calendars in your board packet. We had proposed what was called Draft B in the first iteration of our calendars. We also had a discussion and provided a different option for the traditional calendar, and that was presented to you as school recommendation. Schools' recommendation, not school, schools. And just, you have the list of, of how schools voted, and that vote was seven to four. Of the 11 schools who are on the traditional calendar, seven of those schools voted to go to the school's recommendation instead of Draft B, which was the proposed calendar. The only change in that calendar was to move one of the workdays that had been placed in August back to June to allow for additional time for remediation and retesting and other things that have to be taken care of at the end of the school year. Those things cannot begin until the student days have been completed. So that's why that was important. We can't start early, and that's a big deal. The, again, the only, the only difference is that there were no, there's no change in student days from the proposed calendar to the school's recommendation calendar. And I think there's also one other issue that Dr. Grit wanted to mention that we had been asked to consider by the Board of Elections.
Yes, there's a Tuesday in November that I think something's going on in most of America, and we happen to have several schools that are polling sites. So the election board reached out to us to ask if we would consider an alternative plan or consider not having school that day. And board, what I, what I would ask for you to consider tonight is, we have four schools that would be used as polling sites, and those are Nebo, North Cove, East Middle, and Marion. So those are the four sites that would be typically used in an election year. Given the presidential election, every four years when we have that, we have, we have typically not had school on that day. However, I, my, my recommendation to you would be, let's be a little creative this year, because what we have, what we have before you is a calendar that gets the majority of the student days, as many student days as we can, done before Christmas. So the students at the high school can then test before they go home for winter break. With that said, I think it's pivotal that we don't miss a day of school, and that in those four schools that I recommended, or any other school that by emergency needs to be utilized for a polling place, that we utilize a virtual option on that day. I think that'll allow us to get the 80 days before Christmas, which it's a very tight calendar already, and it, and it's a way that offers, offers a chance to make sure that we're still educating our students. I will never tell you that a virtual day is as good as a school day, ever. You won't hear that from me. But I will tell you that in, in a pinch, it can be utilized. The high school, of course, will be face-to-face that day, and that, that is a pivotal, pivotal day for them. So that would be my recommendation, is that you would approve our calendars as presented, knowing that the one day for elections would be, needed to be remote for those, those that involve polling sites.
So just the schools that are polling sites?
Yes, ma'am.
And do you think that might create a little bit of confusion?
I think we can clarify that, just to be completely honest with you. And it's not uncommon for us to have a waterline break, or a power outage, or, or another reason that it, that is singular to a school. So we have enough time to communicate and certainly think that we could advocate on part of what needs to take place at the high school, but that's a great question. Yes.
Any feedback from our teachers that would be handling that virtual day? Because we've come out of...
Because we've come out of, you know, the COVID era, so to speak.
Mr. Settle, I can honestly say that I didn't ask. And that's something I can do as far as what I what I know we need to do is try to go ahead and get a calendar that was ready for them. But this kind of came up at the, within the, within this timeframe of the month. And I wanted to present my idea to you guys prior to reaching out.
I understand. I'm that guy that asks the month for permission, even though I'm going to probably do something out of courtesy.
Sure, sure.
Also, Mr. Settles, what I understand is we had a record number of voters come out for the primaries, and we had over 6,000 voters that came out for the primaries alone, which was fantastic. But what I learned is that for a couple of the schools that we do have the polling stations at, that it was actually a bit disruptive for our students. And so in order, so in order, we anticipate while over 10,000 voters will come out for this next, for the general election, that's been pretty consistent in our county for general elections. And so we just want to make sure that our students are safe, that the classroom environment, the school environment is not disrupted during that day to accommodate our community as well, to allow, you know, our community to come out and vote.
Sure.
I think our teaching staff is more concerned with the security of our kids. And I think having those four campuses closed off that day, because they're they're such professionals and they take care of their kids every day. And I don't think that they would want just this influx of people if we have a solution. And I think we have two months to prepare people for one day of virtual learning.
We do. And I mean, the other option here, if we're trying to present a calendar, would be, of course, to to take that day off. And I mean, you know, that's one of those, we could do that as well. I mean, that's traditionally what we've been. But but ultimately, that becomes a board's decision tonight. And and I would be fine with either way. I think if we end up doing that, we would need to adjust the calendar to add an additional student day. So it would move the sixth, that last day of school, it would move that to the ninth, and then the final day would be on the 16th, which is, that's just outside of the, we'd have to go back and find a day in the middle. We'd have to find a day. That's just outside. I apologize for stating that. It's outside of that window when you have to finish by the state. So we'd have to find a day within the middle of the calendar to correct that.
Dr. Grit, do we, is East Middle a polling place?
It is.
So, I mean, in my thought, again, I just think that's going to get a little bit confusing. I'm not proposing it be a day off, but I I would think that just our middle schools and our elementaries all go virtual that day, just for the sake of not being confusing, if you know what I'm saying. And then keep our high schools a regular day because that's not a polling place, correct?
No.
I mean, I just, I don't know why. I just feel like this is going to get really confusing. I'd still want it to be a virtual day. I don't want it to be a free day, but I think, I don't know. That's just my personal opinion.
That makes sense to me.
It it sounds to me like maybe that piece of this action requested might need a little bit more discussion or thought. And so I'm wondering if it would be okay if we just go ahead and move forward with the proposed calendar as Mr. Oliver presented it. And then that piece of it, rather than adding to it right now, that we maybe pull that that section off and then have a little bit more time to discuss that? Is that, is that fair? Or do we, are we comfortable just going ahead with the recommendation to? What's that?
If we want to vote on it too, that's fine.
Okay. How about this? How about we make, receive a motion to accept the proposed school calendar? And then we can take a motion, get a second, and then if we need another moment to kind of discuss that virtual day, then we can do that. We'll take that time, decide real quick if we're gonna, what we'll do with that, and then we'll go ahead and we'll close the motion up.
I would like to say something, please, ma'am.
Yes.
The four schools you included, East, Middle, and Middle School, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And, you know, I think probably if you, it could get a situation where it could be confusing. But the more we talk about it, the more confusing it'll get. I think, personally, I think we ought to just go ahead and go with it. And you got two months to, or however long, to iron out all the problems, and we're done with it.
Yes, sir.
That's just my opinion.
Does anyone want to disagree with Mr. Frank's opinion? Okay, then I'll take a motion that we accept the proposed school calendar, 2024-2025 school calendar. Allowing the super.
If we could, pardon me. But if we could, in the motion, we want to say the school's preference calendar.
The school's preference calendar?
That's the actual calendar that Dr. Grit has recommended.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion that we accept the proposed prefernessed calendar for the 2024-2025 school year.
I'll make a motion that we accept it.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. Can I get a second? All right, Mr. Shuford.
Dr. Grit, I have had a couple of people ask a question with that switch in that workday that that was going to be on a Thursday and a Friday at the beginning of the year. Would there be a possibility so that our teaching staff, well, most of them will start being there the first of August anyway, but could they possibly report on that Friday, the 16th, rather than coming to work on a Thursday and then being off on a Friday and then coming back to work on a Monday? Or is that something that they needed to work out with their principals?
I think they'd probably need to work that out individually with their principal. The the issue that we have there on that day is that is the last of the four-day work weeks. So on Friday, the reason that we selected Thursday is because that Friday, technically, we won't have our 12-month employees in the building, so custodians and different folks that tend to lock the buildings up. But I would think that they could work that out with the principal individually. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Show of right hand. That is almost unanimous. Okay. So, seven, not, not, seven out of eight, but the motion carries. That's right. So there's eight of us. One, minus one is seven. So seven out of eight of us, the motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
I would also, in closing, thank you, board, but also thank you to all the members of the committee. There was a, there was a lot of discussion back and forth, a lot of follow-on conversations and input from from the Calendar Committee representatives and principals. And Ms. Silver, thank you for your service on the Calendar Committee. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Oliver. Well, it's obvious I'm not great at this, everyone. So thank you for bearing with me this evening. So we do have new business next, the 2024 Summit Learning Program Plan. Ms. Hamby?
So I will be requesting board action tonight on our summer learning plan. So we are at that exciting time of the year where we get to discuss this year's summer learning opportunities. As part of our continuous model of improvement, McDowell County Schools would like to continue offering summer learning options called Take-Two Camp. Our camps will offer additional instruction in reading, math, science for students who do not meet the proficiency standard on the end-of-the-year assessment. Eligible students for Take-Two Camp will be students who score a Level 2 but are within five points of proficiency on the end-of-grade test. Camp attendance will provide students an opportunity for remediation and a second administration of the end-of-grade assessments. Attending students will receive breakfast and lunch at no cost to them or their families. And bus transportation will be provided as needed to ensure that eligible students have the opportunity to attend. Participation in Take-Two Camp is optional for all students, and students will be held harmless if they choose not to participate. We aim for continuous improvement and look for ways to better serve our students' needs. Upon your approval, we would like to schedule our camp at each elementary and middle school. This will allow students to stay in their home schools where they feel comfortable with the staff and their location. Take-Two Camp will be scheduled for June the 10th through the 13th. And at McDowell High, we will have credit recovery, and it will be offered from June the 17th through June the 27th. Students participating in credit recovery can take the EOCs again following their remediation in that end credit recovery. In order to be able to offer this, we must have the board's approval to offer Take-Two Camp and Credit Recovery to our students.
Okay, thank you. Board, you saw that proposal in your packet. And so I will take a motion to accept the proposed Summer Learning Program Plan.
So move.
All right, Ms. Muma? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Ms. Helmz, Ellen Helmz? We're friends, and I. All right. Is there any discussion?
I've got a question on there because I was trying to find it through the packet. How many typically do we have at the high school? How many remediation students come for that, the EOC? Do we have a typical number for that?
Ms. Bennett, can you help me with that?
The typical number that comes back, I call it summer school, but it's remediation, retesting remediation.
So last year, we had close to 100, between 93 and 100 some, we had to stay for maybe the first three, and we got everything that we needed done.
Okay.
And we also grew the participants in the third as well. So we have some there making the other participants, and there is. And last summer was one of the best summers we've had along.
And we're providing breakfast and lunch for those kids, too. My question's going to be with the remodeling of the cafeteria. Do we have a plan for that?
We will work around that absolutely, given that opportunity.
Okay. That's just what I want to make sure of.
Yes.
Food truck? Okay. I just want to make sure we were.
So we do, most of the time, Mr. Settles, I hope this helps answer the question. Most of the time, we only open select kitchens in the summertime, and we do cater in to various schools since we're unable to staff all of the locations with staff. And so that is a catering service that Mr. Haynes and his staff does very well. And it's closely monitored to meet the guidelines and regulations.
Yeah, just no construction sites. That's not good for anyone. So I want to make sure no one's harmed with it.
Absolutely. And that's, that's a great question. And one, one thing I want to throw out, too, just for for everybody listening out there, you know, last year, and we talked about this this morning, we recovered 136 tests that were not passing to proficient. And we talked about the, the impact that that had on 136 students because that's that situation where you may be a third grader, and you didn't pass the test in third grade. And you didn't pass the test in fourth grade. But when you pass that test, even on a second attempt in the fifth grade, the level of self-esteem that that gives you and confidence that that gives you going into middle school is just, it's critical. And it's, it's really what's, what's important there. So I think it's great that we're able to offer that. I hope we're always able to offer that.
Is there any further discussion on the 2024 Summer Learning Program Plan? No? Okay. So we have a motion made by Ms. Muma and a second by by Ms. Angela Allen-Helmz to approve the 2024 Summer Learning Program Plan. And so we will go ahead and vote. So all in favor? All right, that's a unanimous vote. It carries. Thank you, Ms. Hamby.
Thank you.
It looks like you're also going to present on the ESRA monitoring report. Is that right?
Absolutely. I'm super excited to share the success of our wonderful leadership team. Our recent monitoring experience with the Elementary-Secondary School Emergency Relief, or what we call ESRA, monitoring with the Department of Public Instruction was exceptionally positive. The monitoring process was characterized by a positive experience overall by all who participated. Our team demonstrated thoroughness and commitment to the compliance process. We submitted nearly 9,000 documents as part of our monitoring process, showcasing our dedication to providing comprehensive information on the outstanding efforts in response to COVID-19. The program administrator for our ESRA review was highly complimentary of our team's effort. Importantly, the one thing you've been waiting for, and I am proud to say, is that there was no findings were identified during our monitoring process. I would like to take this opportunity to publicly thank our leadership team sitting here before you tonight for their hard work and dedication. So if I've not said it already, thank you all for a job well done. Overall, the monitoring experience reflects positively on our diligence and effectiveness in managing our ESRA program and funds and ensuring compliance as we all wish to do. Thank you for allowing me to share this opportunity with you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Hamby. Ms. Hamby. Okay. All right, we're going to shift into board reports. And if anyone has anything to share, Mr. Frank with Budget or Finance, anything this month?
Yes, ma'am. Good news, we're gonna not have a meeting, call meeting for this. We had discussed that at our last meeting and thought we would. Thank goodness. Hats off to our finance officer who feels that we could probably do a better job of this in our work session. So thank you very much. We'll do that in April work session, correct? Right, right. Thank you so much, ma'am.
All right, sounds good. Buildings and grounds, Mr. Settles?
Yes, we had a meeting earlier today with a group from NC State University. And how was it pronounced to us? It was actually called?
It's.
Itten?
Ittry.
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 All right, which, and I have for what it stands for here somewhere. But anyway, the group helps us find in the community our needs for the new schools if they come up in the future, possibly combining schools, where our community is growing, where it's depleting in certain areas. So all the knowledge that they have and the information is going to help us to make those decisions in the future, to make sure we make the right decisions. So we're exploring that and help. They're going to provide a quote for their services to us to kind of explore if that's something that we want to do. So other than that, Mr. Oliver did a great job again with all the the upgrades to our school system and Garvin Trinks has done a great job, too, there. So I know we're still cleaning out sewer lines. I notice that every time, so. But thanks for doing that. I know it's not a good job, so thanks.
Mr. Settles?
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind being chair, our tennis coach, John Wells, is here. Let's find out how our tennis courts are doing. They're brand new.
Coach John, I was looking up the record right now. What's going on? Because I saw you in there. But how are we doing with the tennis?
That's why I wanted to let you know, because I know you were concerned about the safety of these courts.
Yes.
We've had one, only one home match, the other one got beat, too. That was with North Punctman. I asked him when they came, the coach and the players, if they would give you feedback if they felt there was any issues at all with these courts. And all I got back was these are great.
So that's awesome.
Nope, they didn't have one negative at all.
That's great. Great news. Thanks for letting us know that. And good luck to you the rest of the season.
Well, we're having fun.
On those beautiful new courts. Good. Thank you. All right, Ms. Silver, Curriculum and Instruction, do you have anything to update?
We're looking to purchase some math curriculum.
I think, I think I heard about that today.
T8 Systematic.
Check. There is nothing to add for personnel and policy. We did just go ahead and approve the most recent policy updates. And so I'll turn it back over. And I'm sure, Ms. Silver, you've got some great things to say about Head Start.
Always. Dr. Delaney and her team, I just love it. I say it every month, but it's my favorite part about the second Monday of every month. Couple of staffing updates. If you know anyone that would be interested in an instructional assistant position at Head Start, working with three-year-olds, that's a 10-month position. Early Head Start custodian position, part-time, but that would be 12 months. And and as, as always, our, our employees that were there left because someone offered them more money to to take those positions. They're in the fourth year of a five-year grant cycle. And the 2024-2025 budget that they will have presented is $2,291,248. That includes salaries, buildings, and utilities. If you have not taken the opportunity to look through the packet that was presented that's in our consent agenda, I encourage you to do that because if you want to see a team of people that is working theirselves to death to educate our youngest and most vulnerable learners, it is our Head Start program. And, and I just cannot say enough good things. I, I got emotional today during our policy meeting, because it is giving every kid in this county that qualifies to come to this program, um, a Head Start, literally a Head Start. Um, and I think some of us take for granted the families that we have and the families that we come from, but the bulk of our kids do not come from the types of homes that we have, and it levels the playing field. So again, if you hadn't had a chance to look at that, one thing that, that Dr. Dulany mentioned, and I followed up with her later on, um, looking at our staff wages for our Head Start staff, we are the lowest, uh, in staff comparability in our region. And so I asked her to name some of the counties that we are regionally put together with to think about the fact that ours are paid the lowest, that is paid out of federal funds. Um, the only thing that McDowell County Schools pays, uh, for is four percent of Dr. Dulany's salary. But some of the counties that are in our region are Watauga, Caldwell, Alexander, Catawba, Burke, Avery Mitchell, Yancey, Madison, Buncombe, Polk, Henderson, Transylvania, Swain, Graham, Cherokee Clay, and Macon. Um, so that looks at a large demographic base. Um, but I think that that's something that we need to, 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 first of all, put pressure on our, um, our federal representatives and our state representatives, but also locally, is we need help. We need help to be able to be competitive, um, to keep people in these positions. Because we are, again, the lowest out of that, that is from Catawba County West, so, that's it.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, Board, we're at the spot of approving the consent agenda. As a reminder, any item may be pulled from the consent agenda with, agenda with the majority of the vote of the Board and discussed and voted on as a separate item. Um, are there any items on this list for the approval of the consent agenda that anyone would like to poll and discuss separately? All right, then I will go ahead and take a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make the motion, we approve it as presented.
All right, Mr. Settles makes a motion, and Mr. Shuford makes a second, is there any discussion? All right, all in favor to approve the consent agenda? That's a unanimous vote, great. All right, so we need to head next into closed session. Um, and I will give the reasons why we're moving into closed section, our session. Um, the, the stated things that we're doing in closed session tonight is we are addressing privileged or confidential student information. Uh, there's disclosure of privileged or confidential personnel information. Also matters protected by the attorney-client privilege, uh, to discuss the terms of a contract for employment, and then to plan, conduct, or hear reports concerning investigations of alleged criminal misconduct. And so those are the reasons why we are heading into closed session this evening. I need to have a motion made in order for us to move in that way. All right, Ms. Muma makes a motion.
Second.
All right, Mr. Abernathy makes a second, is there any discussion?
Before we go, can I, sorry?
Yes.
I just want to encourage y'all, because I know there was a lot of videotaping of, of the chorus thing that went on tonight, please share it on, on social media. In my time on the Board, that's one of the most moving things that I've ever seen, uh, I got chills, cold chills. Uh, but it's just wonderful, and, uh, so, so share that, please share that on social media, I'd like to get it out there, so...
Thank you so much, agreed. All right, all in favor to move into closed session? It's a unanimous vote, thank you, everyone, for coming, and thank you for bearing with me as I muddled through.